I'll set. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, September 4th to order. Please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The listing of Madison is those reasonable and anticipatable that share which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items in the meeting in fact be discussed. Another items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the law. A meeting may be recorded for use on the internet and on our local cable station. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight and on this fine fall evening. And public hearings and appointments. The status or the acceptance of Pearl Road?
Yep, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, Pearl Road was a discussion topic at town meeting. We had asked legal counsel for the town, Mr. Gay, to be here this evening. And at the very last minute, he had a personal matter that came up and he asked me if he could come in on September 18th. My feeling is this, is that he provided a document to the board. I issued it to each one of you individually a couple of hours ago when it came in. I have reviewed it with him, spent considerable amount of time with him last night on it, and also most of the day reviewing the statutes as well. Basically, at the end of the day, his opinion is, is that Pearl Road was accepted following the correct legal process at town meeting based on the fact that it was accepted through the planning board under the subdivision control act of 1953. You know, recall over the summer, I had conceded that there was a gentleman who brought up the fact that we should have followed a different process. And I said, geez, you know, I'm not a member of the planning board. I've never heard this before. But that's because almost every single road now gets accepted as a subdivision. It doesn't get accepted through an eminent domain, or a taking, or some other matter. So if it were under one of those other scenarios, the process that the other person had outlined would be more accurate. In this case here, we followed the statute. The planning board reviewed it. They laid out the streets, the meets, and the bounds. They provided it to the town clerk's office back in 2011, many years in advance of town meeting for public review. And as a result, he has come to the conclusion that that road, along with the other roads that we have accepted over the last handful of years as part of subdivisions, have followed the legal process. So in reference to Pearl Road, his advice at this point is, is that that deed between the HOA and the town, there was just a couple of specifications in there in reference to drainage and sewer. We are going to meet with Conservation Commission, the Board of Health. I've had a conversation with a member of the HOA. And what they will, we will do is we'll make sure that everybody is happy with that language. We will bring it back to the board and the HOA for everyone to sign, and then record Pearl Road as a publicly accessible road at that point.
Well, it's great. They did all the research. And of course, the planning board took quite a hit there. You know, they're making comments. They don't know what they're doing and all that stuff. So I think you apologize to the planning board because they've always done a great job for us. And I don't know if you've got a few words you want to say?
No, I'm just, I'm just glad that-
Yeah, we finally brought it to-
He cut into it and laid it all out because that is basically the way it goes. I think, I saw, I was copied on that and I, I fully agree with it. I think he did it and recovered the subject completely.
Very good. So we just hold until you, you don't want to vote tonight?
I do not need a vote. What I'm going to do is, is that I am going to, unless there's an objection from the board, I'm going to follow town council's opinion, which is that I will meet with the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, ask them to review the language, make sure the language is acceptable to both of those respective boards along with the HOA. At that point, we will bring the deed back before the board at a later date and ask the board to sign at that point.
Okay. Any other comments from, sounds good. Any other resources?
Just a question. We'll, so we'll have an opportunity to review the language and provide input?
Sure. I mean, again, I, I think that the two boards, they, you know, they have their jurisdictional input, because I don't know enough about sewer or drainage. So they'll, they'll put the language together. I'll forward that language over to the board. And then you guys don't have to sign if you don't want to. And you're the ultimate decision maker about conveying the deed. So if you're not happy with the language, then you wouldn't sign it, and then we would have to redraft it.
My primary concern has been the shared septic system. And I don't know a lot about it. So I would like, at least, I'd like to get some education on that from the appropriate board. So when we make a decision, it's an informed decision.
Sure.
Yeah, good. There was a comment there that other divisions that are out there, they'll look into, you know, there. So we want to make sure that we're right on this thing. They'll cover the rest of the roads that are out there.
That's correct. Because those are other roads, you know, you think about Woodrow Lane, for example, Brashiani Lane, those were all part of subdivisions and as a result followed the appropriate process.
Okay. More to discussion? Okay. Moving on then. Discussion in the act on Crowley foreclosure.
So, Mr. Chairman, our treasurer here is Scott Golda. Scott, if you would, just give a brief overview, and then we can turn over to Attorney Lawton at that point?
The Crowley property on Walnut Street, we had put in a tax title in 2007. We put it into the foreclosure process last year. And as of May 2nd, I believe, we received the foreclosure decree. So as of that point, the town owns the property. The owners have now said that they have the money and they wanted us to vacate the foreclosure decree, pay off everything that's due, and bring it back to cover the taxes.
Oh, is it the sons? I knew the old timers there. Was it the sons are now in charge of that property, or?
They know better than I know.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, how are you? My name's Rick Lawton, members of the board.
Hi.
I'm with Dan Crowley. Dan's one of the sons of one of the original owners.
One of the sons. I knew you-
Grandson.
All right, grandson. Okay.
And just by way of background, the Crowley family purchased this property back in 1916. So it's been in the family for over 100 years, as you well know. And it was an active deal refound for years and years. And his grandparents passed away, and his dad's passed away, his mother's still alive, Dan's. But it belongs to he and his siblings. And without knowing what to do with the property, the taxes accumulated, and before they knew it, there was a tax taking. So the Crowleys have put together a proposal for a subdivision using, utilizing a portion of the land. And as you'll recall, the land is on Walnut Street, and it butts West Chestnut Street in Brockton. And we're Danless off of West Chestnut Street. So they've got that. And the city, the family would like the property back in their name. So we're seeking a vote from the Board of Selectmen, which would approve a certificate of redemption. It's within the one year putting title back in the Crowley family. And the Crowleys have brought to the, with the board today, they have a certified bank check for over $113,000, which pays all of the back taxes due on the property, and another check for over $6,000, which is the most current assessment. And so having paid all of the money to the city of, the town of West Bridgewater, the Crowley family would be seeking a vote to put the title back in their name.
How many acres are we talking about up there?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six acres?
Twenty-six and a half.
Okay. Yeah. I'm very familiar with the, you know, with the property. And there'd be an excess on Walnut Street, on Walnut Street.
That's correct.
Okay. Denise, questions?
Just to confirm, that amount clears all municipal lanes, including any water?
That's correct. And we just need a vote. And once the town, the tax collector process, the checks, then they would be looking for the town to issue the certificate of redemption, which is in a reportable form to record at the registry of deeds. And we'd pass that back in the Crowley family.
So there are two ways that the Crowley family can take it out. Is to continue in land court, or come before the Board of Selectmen for a vote. Seeing that that's an option, they have the money to pay, then I would be requesting the board at this point to take a vote to authorize an issuance of certificate of redemption. And therefore, Mr. Crowley then would provide the Board of Selectmen a certified check for $113,000 and change, $113,690.57 to be exact. And then the treasurer then will take it out, tax title at that point.
All right. I'll make a motion to authorize-
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm good.
Do you have any comments?
Good.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the issuance of a certificate of redemption for the Crowley property.
Scotty, you'll take the check. Second. Any other discussion? Does anybody else want to talk on this? Okay. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, all right.
Nice to meet you after all these years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gay, thank you.
Good one. Oh, the next one now is, it's public hearing, it's slated for 7:25 there. Is we going to wait till the 7?
Nope. It's, it's an applic-, it's not a public hearing.
An application, common vehicle license. We can go ahead, right?
We can.
Application, common vehicle license, entertainment license by the Bridge Coffee House located at 200 and City 9, West Center Street. Maybe get a chance to talk, and maybe advertise what's going to go in there in a little bit, and do a little sales pitch here.
Sure.
Your name, for the records?
Yeah, it's called the Bridge Coffee House.
Yeah. And your name?
My name is Steven Sargent.
All right.
I'm the pastor of the church.
Yeah, right.
But we're looking to utilize our lobby space during the week when the church isn't meeting.
So you get your coffee and the blessing the same time, or?
Yeah. Well, actually, different time. Blessings on Sunday.
Okay.
Coffee on Monday.
Oh, the different kind?
Yeah, yeah. That's right. I think that's a good tagline. I'm going to use that. Being Monday through Saturday, just, we're using it as a coffee shop with coffee and espresso, and not a full-service restaurant or anything like that. But we kind of designed the lobby space to feel like a cafe so that we could open it up during the week for people to come in and use the space to study and work from, especially the college and different students around town.
And it's coffee that's sold here right in West Bridgewater, is it?
The beans are, yeah. They're roasted in, well, they're in-
Yeah, I just commented, another place that has that same coffee there.
Equal exchange coffee.
Well, I don't have to put the cream in it there because I like it black and-
We'll make a note of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I, I go certain places where you get coffee, I'll take it and run you right out the door.
That's good.
You get a cream in it.
We're getting feedback.
A cream in it.
Yeah, we'll have it all.
So what else are you going to have there? Just coffee, or what else?
Yeah, we might have, like, we might pick up some pastries and have them available as well. We're not planning to cook anything there because it's not a full kitchen.
Hours of operation, huh?
Yeah, 7 to 2, Monday through Thursday.
Yeah.
And then Friday, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, is it 8, 9?
7 to 9.
7 to 9.
9.
And then Saturday, we'll close, we'll go-
8 to 5.
8 to 5. So we can turn it around so Sunday morning, we can use it as a church space.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. What were the hours going to be again?
Monday through Thursday, 7 to 2.
Okay.
Friday, 7 to 9. Saturday, 8 to 5.
And this is strictly going to be coming in? You're not going to have any to-go service as far as?
Like a drive-through?
Right.
No, no drive-through.
No.
You pick it up and take it with you. There is seating there. But, yeah.
So did this go through all the usual channels for a-
It did.
Coffee house?
Yep. So it did. So the building inspector has no issues, the planning board has no issues. Remember, the, the church has already been permitted through the planning board through site plan review. So this is just another business inside that building. There are some concerns that they have. They've been so noted on the license, they just refer to making sure there's available parking and some other issues. We've put it on the license. So, and they've obviously agreed to it. So all I would be doing is just be looking for a vote to approve, subject to the conditions on the license.
So parking was an issue? What were the other issues?
I think the handicap ramp.
Why don't you go to Mike's?
That was the only outstanding that we had when we came in.
Okay.
We had to put in a temporary because we got a certificate of occupancy in the winter, and we couldn't pour concrete at that time of year.
Okay.
So Mike, our contractor, finished the handicap ramp this past week.
Oh, good. Thank you.
And it was inspected by Mike. So those are the two things. But the parking, we'd resolved with the other tenants.
Okay.
Any more questions? Nancy, do you got any?
I was going to ask about the coffee, but you covered it.
No, no.
Yes.
Well, yeah, it's kind of, we seem to be a town of coffee houses and churches. Now I understand, the latest church that I hear today was the CVS. That huge building up there now is the church.
The CVS?
Yeah, with the, the old CVS came up.
28-
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, somebody, so, you know, I didn't dare to look over there. I tried to keep my eye on the road. But I noticed there were painters the other days. I said, you got another church there. I says, well, we certainly got a, and that's not a bad probably use of it either, you know?
Absolutely.
You can calm some of these people down. Out there, you know. Take your guns away from them or something. No, no, they could have guns to protect themselves, you know.
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the application.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion. Anybody else got a, any comments out there?
Hey, Eldon, yeah.
Danny, you got any comments?
Too much coffee tonight.
Not enough. Apple cider sign. Almost October, right? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there a vote here now? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you at church.
Okay. See you later.
Thank you, guys.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I lost my connection to the agenda and the packet on here.
You lost your connection?
Yes. Sorry about that. I'm sure it's one of these tabs, but it went out and then gave me multiple options.
So you mean the tabs at the bottom?
I, I'm-
So the tabs at the top and the- The tabs, they're working up and down. You have to scroll them out.
Okay.
I'm going to scroll to, to the top.
I can follow along on this, Linda. Musters.
No, that's because we're on business, actually, too.
Okay.
Yeah, move on because you really need to double quickly. Yeah, it comes on. Just, it went out. Yeah, just scroll down.
Okay.
Scroll up, down.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, moving on. Once, Boards of Selectmen Business, cable television advisory committee appointment, Adam Carrero. Ben?
Hello again.
Yeah. Looking a freaking bit of it here lately, you know?
Just one meeting after another. So this is Adam Carrero. He is filling the position for our cable advisory board that was vacated by Steph Churchill at the last meeting. He's been a volunteer with our cable studio since September of last year, helping out with football games and other events. He's been a resident of West Bridgewater for, what'd he say?
Five years.
Five years. And a graduate of the New England Institute of Technology, degree in video and audio production.
Yep, bachelor's degree.
Quite a background in that. Very, very interested in, I know, I know Ben does a good job, and quite so. He's going to have a little bit more help from you then.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think it's terrific that you, you know, want to get appointed to that committee there. Ben does a good job, and it could be a better job. You got any comments? No. I'll make a motion to-
He's all quiet tonight. I'm voting Denise.
Maybe he needs a coffee.
Denise, got any words? He needs coffee, Eldon. He needs some coffee. No, I think this is great.
Okay. So we have a motion from you?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? Anybody else want to comment? Danny, you're going to comment on this one? No, Danny's not going to say nothing tonight. Okay, go for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to go in and get sworn in by the clerk.
It was easy, huh?
Resignation from the alternate position on zoning board of appeal, Gail Cipatelli. We got a resignation here?
Motion to accept resignation for Gail Cipatelli from the zoning board of appeals and the municipal building needs committee.
Okay, you get to take the vote at once. Or is there a second?
I'll second with an add to it, send her a letter of appreciation.
Okay. Any discussion? BNC is taken care of. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Approved minutes, meeting minutes of July 10th, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Danny's in favor of that one, I think. Communication reports from boards, commissions, town officials, correspondence, and the public determine the course of action. Public comments? Danny, can we hear from you?
No.
You don't have nothing?
I got nothing.
Whiz them.
I'm just listening to you.
You were at the assesses meeting. You hear no comments? Everything went smooth and everything else down there?
Yeah. We go mad because they tabled the vacation days.
Oh.
Again, it was supposed to be tonight.
So it's usually kind of a focal point down there, so, so it was a quiet meeting.
Yeah.
Even Denise came up here early, too, so-
Yeah, I kicked her over.
Oh. I doubt that. Public comments? Public comments. Can hear from those empty chairs, huh? Okay. All right. Board members, you have any comments?
Nothing.
I think the only thing I want to mention, because there's been a lot of talk about the cut through over between Copeland Street-
Yeah.
And North Main Street.
Yeah.
And it's already been published that two people were charged with dumping some stuff. I don't know exactly who they were. I didn't bother asking. It's really irrelevant. They need to clean up their junk and let the legal system handle the rest. But I did put a call into Rob Casper.
Yeah.
And his update was that the owner of the property is supposed to be ordering a dumpster and starting cleanup. I put a second call into Rob to ask if he had a timetable on that.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to report out is, you know, Sunday's West Bridgewater day at the pack from 10 to 5. And of course, usually, it draws quite a lot of crowd. It looks like, the way the weather is kind of, what did it say? You don't know. But they say Sunday is supposed to be a pretty good day. So I hope they get good weather and hope to see you all there. Danny, too?
Of course.
This is Danny Day.
I guess so. He's special.
Okay. Anything else the board would like to interject in here? I see we have, we had a letter, Manly Street, that Dave, that you corresponded, and also you sent Dutcher, you worked on that?
I did.
Yeah, he's asking to hook up to the Brockton sources. We had that, that agreement there with the family dollar, and he gave him a copy of that. And I saw him today, and he told me how professional you are, Dave, and trying to get, you know, the answers for him, you know? And this Manly Street thing there, is the proper authorities, like the police, notified on-
Yes.
Concerns?
Yes.
Of speeding and our truck route up on Manly Street there. So that's been adhered to. And I know it's not on agenda that Dave and I attended a meeting up in Brockton with the mayor and you were the delegates up there. And the only thing we talked about is the people that are up there and the homeless. And I really don't have anything to report. There's only a committee that's supposed to be looking into it further. But we got, we seem to get a report from all the other communities, like Avon and West Bridgewater, two or three homeless. But Brockton never listed how many were homeless, though. I don't know how I can sell if they're looking for help without knowing exactly what I'm selling. So right now, we're going to have to wait till that goes to committee and see what they want to do with it. Originally, I thought that we would be going a little bit further and talking about all the things that have happened on the line that we should be discussing. And now came out of leaving, and it's become the ghost center up there. And, and another thing that Dave and I were talking there is Brockton has additional storage. And they certainly are just holding on to it there. I certainly think that they would like to be making some money on that. And there's things like that that we should be discussing with, with them. So I, I hope to have another meeting. And, but the mayor, who's right now, I don't say he's acting, he is mayor, talked to David and I for considerable amount of time. And I, I think he would like to do, do some things there, you know what I mean? Because we certainly are going to have to work this area here because there's nothing down here, you know? Everything else seems to go on. So that's kind of a follow-up. Maybe David is looking for, you know, assignments there for doing a project, and maybe that would be a project. Is try to get growths down in this area there in, in the West Bridgewater, Brockton line. You think that would be a good goal, setting thing, or?
Target.
Ah, target?
Well-
Why are you in charge of Target?
Yes, we've heard that one once or twice.
You know, even though we're laughing about it, do we do anything to try to reach out to larger businesses and invite them to come here and see what properties we have, we have available?
So that was, years ago, that was one of my chief objectives. I had hoped that, because I have a considerable sales and marketing background, that we could do that. Truthfully, we haven't done as good of a job as I had hoped because it just seems like on a daily basis, we get mired in day-to-day activities that, that prevent us from doing it. And quite frankly, the town has an economic development commission that should be doing that, that has been defunct now for a handful of years.
Okay, so we, so we really don't have a commission if it's-
Oh, no. No, no, we, we don't, they are not an acting commission at this point.
So what do we need to do to ask them to come active? Because we have these storefronts that are vacant. I mean, the, the town has a lot to offer. Granted, 106 is tough to get down. But, you know, you can access so many different areas through 106.
Right, right.
And it's proximity to 24. That area of town is a pretty busy area. It used to be, at least at one point. And there really, there's no department stores around for that area of town. I mean, what, there's nothing left on the east side of Brockton, is there really? Is there, are there any department stores left over there? I think there's a Home Depot.
On your side, yeah.
Shaw's, is Shaw's still there?
Behind it.
I don't even know if it's-
Yeah, Shaw's is still over there.
Shaw's is still there. But there's really, I mean, there is some presence, but there is no big department store presence.
Look, there's no doubt that the Route 28, West Bridgewater-Brockton area needs, needs some attention. The person who owns the access road bought the entire development with the intent of being able to fill all of those, those buildings. He's owned it now for about a year. For whatever reason, he has not been able to increase the occupancy. Since he's paying for it, or has paid for it, I am sure he is actively attempting to fill it. Be no reason not to. But really, there's not, from an occupancy standpoint, I don't know what the exact number is, but I think that you find that West Bridgewater is a fairly high occupancy rate. Brockton's a different story, you know? Brockton, obviously. And they have, you know, they have staff that works on that, and yet they still have a high vacancy rate. You know, West Bridgewater really doesn't have that much of an issue.
But they had, well, that's a key store. Now, now KMS gone there, McDonald's, they're gone, and Friendly's. So that's some real key people. And none of them made it down to that. For some reason or another, the people- For some reason or another, the people just are not doing it. They, they tend to use a breakfast place down there pretty, pretty regularly. But other than that, it doesn't seem to be going. And then that shopping center there, you know, I know it's changed hands and I don't really think, that's being marketed properly there because if they do get somebody, they don't say, you know?
So what you're saying, Dave, is by quantity, we don't have a lot of available space? Just what we seem to have are some of the larger footprints?
Yeah, that's, that's the real, that's the real, and again, it's at least owned. The person's paying his taxes, from what I understand. But it would be nice if we could see him develop the property. There's no doubt about that.
Does he own the entire-
He does.
Plaza, including where Kmart is?
No.
Okay.
Just the entire old Shaw's plaza.
Okay. So that section where Kmart is, do you know who owns that?
I do not because it's entirely in Brockton, so we don't interact with them.
Okay. I'm just curious what, you know, what Brockton might be. I know it's kind of soon, but where Brockton stands on it, because regardless, parts of West Bridgewater, parts of Brockton, everyone pretty much looks at it as the whole area.
Right, right.
It's a, you know, it could be a nice shopping district. There's some businesses that are doing pretty well in there. So we're thankful we have them. It'd be nice to have a few more.
Yeah. You got any ideas on that?
As long as I'm always there, I'm happy.
Oh, yeah. That's all right. All right. Like I said, just a thought. No other comments? We'll move on to Town Administrator's Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really three quick FYIs for the board, all positive. One is, is that Comcast Cable, you signed the contract earlier in the summer. As part of that contract, they were to pay the town $125,000 one-time upfront capital improvement. So that way, our cable company can use that money as they need to update their facilities. We've received in the check, so that's positive. The second is, is that congratulations to our fire department and specifically our deputy chief, Lincoln Tebow. He wrote a federal grant. Here we call a town meeting. We went to town meeting and asked for $3,203 as part of the grant for the diesel exhaust system. And we were notified by Senator Warren's office and that the grant has been approved at the federal level. So the federal government is providing us a little over $64,000. The taxpayer is only paying $3,200 and we will have a new state-of-the-art exhaust system in the fire department. And the last is, is that the fire union will be holding its annual fundraiser in the center of town on October 19th. And per your policy, I signed off on the request. That is everything.
Anything else to bring up before the meeting? There's no executive session, so.
Have we sent anything or do we typically send something to, for example, link for, this was really excellent work?
We certainly can.
Okay.
I thought you were going to say Senator Warren.
No, to link for excellent work.
And we have our-
We will.
Our annual employees party there coming up. What's the date of that?
September, September 20th.
September 20th, okay. And that's at 12 o'clock, right?
Yes, it is.
So I threw out the option of meatball subs or beef tenderloin. They chose meatball subs.
Well, I guess.
I was going to, I was going to do something different, but meatball subs won.
Meatball subs, huh? Oh, well.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a motion to adjourn? And a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So voted. Thank you.